Recording in progress.
Good evening. I will now call the Auburn Study Session Meeting for Monday, August 25th, 25 to order. Tonight's study session will be held both virtually and in person. Hannah, can you please call Rome?
Deputy Mayor Rakes?
Here.
Councilmember Amer?
Here.
Councilmember Baldwin?
Here.
Councilmember Sturgis?
Here.
Councilmember Clinton Taylor?
Here.
Councilmember Tracy Taylor?
Here.
Councilmember Trotmanwell?
Here.
Thank you. Hannah, do we have any agenda modifications for this evening?
No, Chair, we do not.
Thank you. Under announcements, reports, and presentations, we have a discussion item for Recreation Bike Program with Director Kruger. I will now turn the portion of the meeting over to her.
Excuse me, Deputy Mayor, that's not under announcements, it's under community wellness.
Oh, I'm sorry, it's under community wellness.
That's okay. You did.
All good?
Yeah, all good.
We're all good.
All good. Thank you.
Greetings, Council, Mayor. I'm Julie Kruger, the Director of Parks, Parks and Recreation. And with me tonight is Kirsten Ling. She's Recreation Coordinator and currently our Acting Recreation Manager. She's going to share with you some Auburn bike programs and some information about our Cedar Lanes Bike Park.
Hello, thank you for having me tonight. Tonight, we're going to share with you the work we've been doing at Cedar Lanes. Over the last about five years now, we have been doing a complete redevelopment out there and greatly expanding programming around bikes with the intention of getting kids moving, engaging in a positive, healthy activity, and really connecting with that sense of childhood which comes from riding a bike. We'd like to start by telling you about some of the redevelopment that's taken place out at Cedar Lanes. We started in June of 2022, or 2023, early in the fall, or excuse me, in the spring, with construction of Phase One, which completed four skills areas. It's a skinny zone and a drop zone, a jump line, and a dirt single-track flow trail. And then in June, or in the spring of 2024, we completed Phase Two, which included a picnic shelter, a restroom facility, and the first asphalt pump track in Western Washington. A pump track is a track that they start riding their bike on, and they pump their arms, almost like one of those old-fashioned railroad cars that you see in the movies or in cartoons. They pump their arms to get momentum, and so they're kind of working to get all the way around the track without having to pedal.
We've got some video to show you.
Yeah, we're going to give you a little demonstration. So do.
That park, too, was just, it was funded, partially funded with a grant from King County Youth Sports Facility Grant.
It's an award-winning park, so we're really proud that it was selected this past year for WRPA, Washington Recreation Parks Association Spotlight Award. We've got, where's our video? Oh, yeah, okay, forgive me. So we're going to talk about some programs that we've been doing in the community. These are currently funded through grants, and they are active programs, so we are currently running these. The first that we'll tell you about is Summer Ride. We started Summer Ride in 2023, and we offered it twice a week on Tuesday and Thursday afternoons, and it brings kids out to the park to ride bikes. We provide the bikes, we provide the helmets, we provide instructors, and a community for them to ride together. It brought people into Cedar Lanes to showcase the park and to teach them how to safely use it. And we thought we had great success. We averaged around 40 kids a session, and it was a lot of fun. In 2024, we thought, well, let's, let's try moving it to the evenings. So we moved it to 5:00 to 8:00 p.m., and we saw a huge increase in participation. We also saw a real change in the demographic that we were serving. It became a lot more of an accurate representation of the community. We saw more families coming out. They'd bring their picnic blankets and their chairs and their dog and their kids, and it really was a wonderful community gathering space. It was pretty magical. And then this year, we just finished our, our third session, third year running with it, and we served 369 individual kids in the program, with 1,122 kids checking out a bike. So that doesn't take into account all the kids who brought their own bike, or the parents who attended with them. So we estimate that we averaged over 200 kids a night, or people a night at each session. One thing that we were really excited about this year is we saw a real large Sikh community come out to ride with us, and a couple of years back, we found this great company in Vancouver called Bold, and they created a helmet design, which you can see in this photo, that's specifically for kids who are of Sikh faith. So it accommodates their hair and still allows for them to wear a helmet safely. And when families saw these, they were so excited that their kids could get out and ride bikes safely, and parents weren't having to worry, and it was an accommodation for them to just let the kids ride like everybody else. Summer Ride is completely grant-funded, so it's, was funded in '23 and '24, partially through King County Sports Grants. And I think we also have up here Sikh funding. So after, during COVID, we were fortunate enough to receive $40,000, I think it was about $40,000 in Sikh funds, which allowed us to really grow our bike inventory. We started the bike program in 2018 with 30 bikes and a 20-foot box trailer and helmets, and now we have over 140 bikes for tiny, tiny tots up to adults and helmets to match, and two trailers and a bike barn, and it's just really grown exponentially. So some of that, a lot of that was due to the Sikh funding, and I think the exciting thing about that grant is that it allowed us to keep going. It wasn't, we're not dependent on finding funding year after year. We take good care of the bikes, and we can continue to run programs. Have to give a shout out to Psychotherapy. They've been a really positive partner for us in Summer Ride the last three years. Psychotherapy's a nonprofit here in Auburn, Auburn that strives to teach kids to ride bikes, get them riding to promote positive mental health in youth. They started during COVID when they saw the effects of, of staying home on kids, and they provide us with volunteers, so many volunteers, over 200 combined hours this year. But also, they expand our inventory by bringing bikes and instructors and helmets and allows us to serve more kids. So they've been a really fantastic partner. They were a recipient this year of an $11,000 grant through the Auburn Office of Equity, and that was really helpful for them to be able to expand their programming.
Little bit of video for you from Summer Ride, this session in 2025. So that's where Kirsten was explaining the kids using just their handlebars to kind of get momentum to move around the track.
It's really fun to see how quickly the kids progress. It's such a confidence boost for them. You can see this little guy there in the front, he's just starting out, and then they get, they get more confidence, and they start to ride faster. And it's really fun to see the organic nature of the community of the kids, how they will slow down and make room for the little ones, and they help each other, and they coach each other, and it's really a great experience for them. This is some of the wooded trails, that's the jump line there. We do require that all kids wear helmets, and every time I am out about in Auburn and I see kids on bikes wearing helmets, I'm like, yes, it's working. The culture is spreading.
When the little, up titled bike, you might just saw the little one. Give a shout out to Jason Jones in the back there, they took this video for us. So you can see the people playing volleyball in the background. Really, families just come out and it just enjoy their time at the park. Their kids can be riding on the trail, and then they're eating dinner and just hanging out and talking to their people.
I think also we want to mention that something that really impacted us this year, Public Works did a sidewalk improvement project this spring, which extended the sidewalk from M Street down 25th to the park, which helped us encourage parking to be done at Pioneer Elementary School. The school district has been really generous with providing non-school hours parking, and it, it allowed us to be much better neighbors to the neighborhood by not having all these cars parked on our narrow street. So code of parking enforcement came out a few times and helped us enforce that, and parents and families really used that sidewalk, parked at the school, walked in, and I think it really helped the program this year with making us less of a disturbance to the neighborhood and helps the neighborhood feel even more positive about the park. We hear a lot of comments from neighbors. Lots of people in that neighborhood are out in the park walking their dogs, walking their kids, using the playground, and there's been a lot of positive feedback about the increased positive use in that park. So we're always excited to hear that. Another program that we have that's ongoing and currently grant-funded is the Ride Revolution Program. This is funded through Washington State Department of Transportation. It's made possible by Washington Clean Air Act money. We began last year, 2024, and we received a $212,000 grant to operate this program. We were refunded this spring for $215,300 to continue running it next year. And the fantastic thing about this grant is that there are hopefully 13 more years of funding for this program, so we'll be able to serve a lot of kids. We focus on quality, not quantity. So our first year, we did serve 38 kids, got off to a little bit of a slow start, started in January, and Ride Revolution focuses on four main areas. It teaches middle school and high school students bike safety, ride skills, alternative transportation, and bike maintenance. And it is a hands-on program. They start off with building their bike. They get a box with their bike, and they build it together, and then it takes them through a 30-hour program that teaches them those four pillar skills. At the end of the program, they get to keep their bike, they get to keep their helmet, they get a light set, and they get a lock. And the great thing about it is that it takes away, we, we give them the confidence to be able to safely and confidently navigate the community, takes away the, I don't have a ride to school, so I didn't go to school today, excuse. They can get to a job if they're a high school student and they have a job. They can get to their friend's house, they can run errands for their family. They can be a really great help, and they can be independent. So we've seen some really wonderful results from the data that we've collected from that program. It will be continuing this year. Last year, we served Cascade Middle School, Olympic Middle School, and West Auburn High School. This year, we plan to expand to also serve Rainier Middle School, Mount Baker Middle School, and Mountain View High School.
And this program also funds a full-time benefited staff member through that program, as well as some three recreation leaders and a bike mechanic. So Kirsten and her team running this program is fantastic.
We expect to serve 100 kids this year. Let's grow it quite a bit. We do offer free, fee-based recreation, community recreation programs, skill-building classes that we do out at the Cedar Lanes Bike Park that teaches basic mountain biking skills. We also do summer camps and family rides. We run an every-other-week summer camp called Wheel Kids Out There, shuttle the kids out, teach them mountain bike skills, and then we do a whole series of family adventures where we load up trailers and we head up, take people out to the mountains and do some trail riding. It's a lot of fun. We have a very popular Pedal Power and All Kids Bike Program, which teaches kids how to ride bikes. We started with preschoolers, two- to five-year-olds, and it was really successful. We just keep teaching kids to ride bikes. And I can say, if you ever need a lift, come and help teach a kid to ride a bike for the first time. It's pretty great feeling. And we found out that there's a lot of big kids who don't know how to ride bikes. So we started All Kids Bike, which is geared towards people with special needs and also older kids, so they use a 20-inch balance bike. So big kid balance bike. We do use the balance bike method. We have banished training wheels. We know now that training wheels do not teach you to balance, they teach you to tip, wait for your wheels to catch you. So we give every kid a balance bike with no, no pedals, and they learn how to stride and glide, and many of them can start riding a bike even in a day. It's pretty fantastic. And it really, I think, the, the benefits of learning to ride a bike go so much farther than just riding a bike. It's, it's a quick win for kids, it's a fast confidence boost, it's exciting, it provides them with a sense of freedom and independence, which we know kids are lacking a little bit in this day and age. So I think we, we like to say bikes save lives. These are former grant-funded programs. We had a tough year this year. We got a lot of, of no thanks on our grant applications.
On our grant writing.
Saw a pretty significant reduction in grant funds available at the state level. So these are programs that we will bring back in the future, but they're not running right now because we don't have the money for them, unfortunately.
But we want to talk to you a little bit about them, just because they were really cool, so hopefully we can do them again.
So we started Bike Club at Pioneer Elementary School in the fall of 2023. It was the fall after the bike park opened, and we said, hey, there's a school right there. We should do a program. And we had some grant money, so we piloted an after-school program that was twice a week with the idea that we would teach kids to mountain bike, and we would teach social emotional skills. So we would put them in a, in a situation where they would learn how to set goals and how to resolve conflicts and communicate with their neighbors and their, their peers, and, and it was hugely successful. We had no idea, we had a waitlist the first day. We started with 38 kids. It was supposed to be 30. I have a hard time saying no, so it kept going up and up and up and up. And we ended up with 38 third-through-fifth graders. Excellent retention, amazing impacts that we saw. We heard it from the school, the school outreach coordinator, the family engagement coordinator, the principal, the teachers. We heard attendance improved, behavior improved, just so many great things. So we said, well, we still have money, let's do it again. So we ran two sessions in the spring, and we served 78 kids in those two sessions, so 116 kids the first year. Every time I see anyone from Pioneer, whether it's a parent, a kid, a staff member, they say, when's Bike Club starting? So it was, it was a really fantastic program. We, we had a lot of fun doing it. We do have a little video snippet. Very diverse group of kids. Some of them didn't know how to ride a bike at all. We had kids with special needs. We had kids who didn't speak English well, or at all. This girl right here had just moved from the Ukraine, didn't know anybody, and didn't know any English, and she learned, didn't know how to ride a bike, and she learned to ride a bike, and she made friends, and she started learning some English, and she really thrived in the program. A lot of really fun success stories. And it's just a chance for the kids to be kids. So every day, we'd walk over to the school, and we'd meet them on the playground, and they would run to the park, and first thing you do is feed them, give them food, and have them run, and work off some of that energy. They really loved it. So it was a six-week program, and we hope, we really hope to get it back and to expand it to more schools. We also ran our Pedal Power Program at, we started at Pioneer, again, just because we have a really great relationship with their, them, and we know that they've got a lot of kids in need. So we, we partnered with E-CAP and Transitional Kindergarten, and we took the Pedal Power Program to the school day. So we loaded up the bikes and went out to the playground and taught their, the Learn to Ride Program. We ran it for three weeks, and it was very popular. The schools loved it. We expanded it, started at Pioneer and expanded to Lee Hill, Willcrest, Dixco, Bee, Jolteray, and Chinook, and ended up with over 300 kids participating in the program. These kids were troopers, too. We did it year-round. I have pictures of them in like freezing fog on the playground with their mittens, and we're passing out hand warmers, and they're just smiling, having a great time. They were really, really tough kids. This was funded through some more King County Youth Sports Grant money, and then also we had a $20,000 grant from the Recreation and Conservation Office. That was a No Child Left Inside Grant, and we definitely didn't leave them inside. So that was the All Kids Bike. We did pilot that. We knew that all, Pedal or Bike Club was so popular, the school said, what can you do for our kindergarteners through second graders? So we did All Kids Bike once a week, and we accepted 30 students, taught a lot of kids how to ride bikes, and that was a really popular program, too. But unfortunately, we ran out of dollars and weren't able to run it again, but we do certainly plan to have it back. So by the numbers, we had 38 teens earn new bikes in, in Ride Revolution this year, 1,122 visits to Summer Ride, 550 kids learning to pedal, over 300 hours of volunteer service, 280 kids in bike camps, and over 800 people at, at events at the park. What's next? Find money. Find more money. We know how great these programs are and what an impact they have on the community, and so now we've just got to find more dollars to continue offering them. Build a core of volunteer coaches, bike mechanics, and trailblazers. It's a lot of maintenance to take care of the trails. That's not something that we put on our park maintenance team. We have, we take care of that in our program, get kids involved in it, raking trails. But we know that the more volunteers we have, the less money we have to spend on, on staff time. So, and it just builds buy-in from the community. They love the park, let's help them help take care of the park and, and engage with it. We'll continue to expand Ride Revolution, and the exciting thing about the park, I think, is that it has, we really didn't want it to just be, here it is, and here's all it will be. So it has a lot of room to change and grow. There are a lot of areas that we can put up some modular skill zones that the kids can help build and decide what they want that to look like, that maybe we change out every year or two to keep it interesting and exciting. So we expect that the park will kind of expand and change and, and take shape as the years, as the years go by. Okay, thank you. Yeah. Any questions? Thank you for your time.
Okay. Great, great program. And I hope that we can find some extra money. Have you ever thought of taking this to our nonprofit organizations and show them this, just the little stifle, you know, the pictures of the kids enjoying the park, and you need funds?
Yeah. Yeah, I think some of these programs, Summer Ride, would probably be a great place to look for a sponsor or to some community sponsors. It doesn't have to be real expensive to implement, but I think that the impact is great considering what it costs to run that program.
Hi, Council, does anybody have any questions? Please.
So if I was a parent with a middle schooler, high schooler, how can I get them signed up for this coming, the next round of Ride Revolution?
We're just getting ready to do our fall recruitment. We are in, just starting interviews for a new rec assistant. So we're, we're kind of rebuilding our team right now and expect that we'll start up probably in October, and then we'll run sessions year-round. We generally just recruit specifically to the school that we're serving, and so I don't have the schedule yet of how, which schools will be at when. But once that schedule does come up, we post it on our website. We have an easy URL, www.aurenwa.gov/bike, and that's where we list all of our bike programs, including the Ride Revolution information, and it's just an online registration form. We do first try to serve kids who qualify for free and reduced lunch, and then fill spots around that. And a lot of our recruitment comes from working with school counselors and school officials, and our staff will go to school. They're all signed up to be volunteers for the school district, so we send them out to the middle schools and the high schools at lunchtime to make connections with kids and do outreach. So it's pretty targeted.
Follow-up question?
Sure.
Is there a max capacity that each session can hold?
Small groups, so we max at 15.
Okay.
But this spring, we ran it for 15 at Cascade. It was really popular, so we ran another session that started kind of a shadow session, ran two groups, two different days a week.
Does anyone up in the Zoom have any questions? Any of the Council?
Yeah.
Is that Kate?
I'll just chime in real quick, which is mainly that I wanted to say, thank you for organizing and supporting so many great biking programs within the community. I am an avid bicyclist myself, when I've got the time, and I know that in addition to these, we also have other great programs coming through Parks and Rec, like, I think I saw one already for this fall for a family ride for the Palooza Cascades Trail even. And so one question I do have is, with these programs and with the great partnerships that we've got with the school districts, do you see maybe in the future potential opportunities for things like bike bus programs?
Yes. I want to get a bike bus going so bad. Is there anyone familiar with a bike bus?
Explain it.
So it's, it's just like riding the school bus, but instead of kids being on the bus, they ride their bikes. So you have stops, and you pick up kids as you go, and so you start out with, you know, maybe three kids riding their bikes, and then you go a couple blocks, and then you have 10 kids, and then you have 20 kids. We did, we have talked with the school district. The school district has the same grants that we have for Ride Revolution. They have the school-based grant, so we work closely with them a lot and try to work together and share resources and trainings. And so we have talked about piloting a bike bus, if nothing else, at least maybe in the, in September around back-to-school season and around Bike Month, and it's really depending on family and parent volunteers, but we would love to help get it started. It's a great way. We know that kids who exercise before school do better in school, and kids who get fresh air do better in school. So we'd love to support that if we can.
Okay. Well, I hope we find a way to find a grant for that someday. So in the meantime, great work, and thank you both so much.
Thank you. Does anyone else have any questions? I have. Okay. You talked about the trailers. Where are they kept, and how secure are they?
They're hidden. Top secret. It's like the North Pole of Auburn.
That's good to know.
We do have a facility near Game Farm, and we have affectionately named the building The Bike Barn.
Okay.
And so the bikes are kept in there. It is secured. It is secured. Extra, extra secured.
Okay. And you mentioned that it's staffed. How many staff are out there helping the, the youth when you open up the, the building?
We do not take anyone to the Bike Barn except for staff because it's hidden. So we don't feel like we need to advertise that building.
That's, yep. Good.
So bikes are taken to kids and to programs. Programs are never taken to the bikes.
I'm talking about the park itself. Where the mayor, the mayor and I had the opportunity to be there when you first opened up and that was a lot of fun. It was great to see the kids all excited, the parents all excited. So how many staff do we have there at the time when you opened up that?
Yeah. Staffing varies depending on the program. When we run our little learn to ride programs with 15 kids, 12 to 15 kids, it takes four to five staff. It's a lot of one-on-one. When we run larger programs, we have fewer staff. It's more spread out. But all of the programs are staffed according to safety. So when we have Summer Ride, we have staff or volunteers stationed at our skills areas to provide coaching and cheerleading and also words of caution like, hey buddy, maybe let's not start on the highest drop. Let's start on the first drop to alleviate some injuries. And then we have checkout. We have a pretty, you know, when you check out 100 bikes in a park, there's a lot of oversight for that. So we have dedicated pass out team. Everyone signs a waiver before they get a bike and that waiver, they are required to acknowledge that they must wear a helmet at all times. And so depending on the size of the program, staffing varies. When we run summer camp, we have six to seven staff with 20 or more kids. So it's a pretty small ratio.
So when you say they need to sign a waiver, parents must be there, what age?
The parent has to attend, has to sign a waiver. So someone over 18 has to sign for a child.
Okay.
Yeah.
My last, it's not a question, it's a comment. I have heard a lot from your community, that community around the park and they love it. They say it's the best thing that Auburn has done over the weekend. It's packed. They said, everybody goes out there, like you said, they bring their barbecues, they, you know, picnic and everything. So thank you for bringing such a great, you know, place for the community could go and they all feel safe.
Yeah. Thank you.
Thank you.
Really proud of it.
Okay. Thank you. Nice job. I turn it back over to Deputy Mayor Rikes.
Thank you, Councilmember Trump Manuel. So next we have a council discussion with Jason Crum on the downtown subarea plan update.
Thank you. Good evening, Deputy Mayor, City Council Members and Mayor. I am Director Crum. Jason Crum, Director of Community Development. Joined tonight by Alexandria Teague, our Planning Services Manager. And yes, indeed, we're here to, this presentation is really meant to kind of be a refresher or an orientation, reorientation to the downtown plan and the work that's been ongoing for a few years now on updating that plan. And so you'll hear to referred, you'll hear it referred to as the 2024 Plan. And that's because it was developed in conjunction with the 2024 Periodic Comprehensive Plan Update. And so they've kind of been running in, in parallel development of those plans. So just by way of a bit of background, our comprehensive plan identifies a special subarea plan, special designate, designated areas. And some of those are subarea plans and those are just unique parts about the city, maybe geographically or because of, you know, the amenities or the type of uses that kind of warrant some additional specific planning policies or development of code.
Investments.
Yeah. Investments, design standards. And the downtown plan is one of those. So we have a downtown subarea plan that was originally adopted back in 2001. And it provided some of that guidance and influenced how downtown was developed over the last 20 years. And I think we all can recognize that the downtown that we see, especially on Main Street today, is quite a bit different than the downtown it was 20 years ago. And that's in part due to this plan and the associated policies and design standards that, that go along with it. So that original plan has kind of seen the end of its life cycle. And so the city has been working on updating that plan for the next 20 years. And that, that's coincides with the, the comp plan. And so the, kind of the, it's another 20-year plan that extends through-
For the cities within the county area. So the city must accommodate, City of Auburn, we must accommodate our allocations. Auburn's allocations or targets, I use those terms interchangeably, is 19,520 new jobs and 12,212 new housing units by 2044. The second thing that it does is that it supports the goals of the Pughstown Regional Council or PSRC's Vision 2050 and Transportation 2050 regional plans. Vision 2050 and Transportation 2050 provide a regional planning framework that supports the accommodation of forecasted growth in a manner that results in the greatest overall benefit to the Pughstown region. So essentially all cities and counties, we plan together. And third, it meets the minimum requirements of a regional urban growth center. Pughstown Regional Council has designated Auburn or downtown Auburn as a regional growth center, which is one of 29 locations throughout the region. And the 2024 Plan builds, as I mentioned, the vision and framework of the 2021 Plan, refining it where needed to ensure alignment with current city policies, current community needs and priorities. Some of these refinements include the expansion of the downtown boundary north of Third Street. So we can accommodate additional growth and align with regional transportation investments. Capitalize on the new Rapid Rider I-line, all becoming down Armored Way North. This will also expand the boundary from 233 acres to 360 acres. It means more space for housing within the downtown, which aligns with the city's Housing Action Plan and Housing Element. And then three, it, it has the creation of districts to recognize that not all areas of downtown are the same. There's, there's distinction, there's differences. So it's districts. The following 10 themes emerged as key challenges and opportunities for downtown Auburn. The first is expanding downtown. I mentioned that on the previous slide. West downtown, obviously it's considered a part of downtown, but there are both access, physical access and market challenges. That railroad connection creates like a physical and maybe even psychological barrier between downtown and west downtown. North downtown, again, expanding to the north could allow us to capitalize on transit-oriented development or TOD development around the new upcoming Rapid Ride. And then Main Street Corridor. That is okay. Well, I'm going to talk about Main Street anyways. The Main Street Corridor is unique within Auburn and it's an asset to the overall downtown area. Programs like the storefront facade improvement program really have made a difference in the downtown area. Have some, I'm going to go over the 10 themes, even though they're not shown on this slide. The Multi Care Hub. The Multi Care is, Medical Center is a major employer downtown Auburn and it's one of the largest employers downtown and is considered anchor. Displacement risks. Pughstown Regional Councils indicated that the downtown has elevated risk of displacement, both commercial and residential. This is also a comment we received from the Department of Commerce. So we really beefed up our anti-displacement policies in the subarea plan, especially our housing anti-displacement policies. Arts and Culture Hub. Subarea plan speaks to an arts and culture hub. The new opportunities at the New Postmark Center and the forthcoming Auburn Ave could really support revitalization efforts on the Main Street Corridor. Housing affordability. It's a key challenge throughout the region. All know this plan supports the development of more housing units with, with taller buildings and more mixed use in different types of housing. Mix of interest and activities. Recent development has revitalized downtown, but more work is needed to make it feel like a real, like a, a real urban core. More things to new downtown, more things to eat downtown was common feedback from early engagement from stakeholders and community members. And then thriving business center. Healthcare and government are both expected to add significant jobs in the region. And Auburn's existing cluster of medical facilities make the downtown well positioned to take manage of this regional trend. So this is a snapshot of the public engagement. The downtown plan has been developed over a three-year period. It does represent an integration of a broad range of stakeholders and interested parties. Details concerning outreach are available in the 2024 Plan, typically pages six through nine. Moving on to the environmental impact statement, our EIS alternatives. And let me explain what an EIS or environmental impact statement is and what it does. An environmental impact statement or EIS was prepared for the new subarea plan. An environmental impact statement evaluates the impacts of different proposed alternatives. Alternatives meaning different alternatives as to what growth and development could look like. The type, scale, the density and the intensity of development. Typically, there are three alternatives. The first is no action alternative, meaning you do nothing, you really change nothing, it's status quo. The second is typically moderate growth. And then the third is a higher growth alternative. And the EIS is a long process that first involves a scoping period, reaching out to various parties, the public stakeholders as to what should be evaluated, what should be looked at. The second evaluates different alternatives with the help of specialized consultants, slant use consultants, traffic consultants, environmental consultants, economic consultants, which we had. And then the third is selecting an alternative. Alternative three, the higher growth alternative was selected as a result of community feedback, data analysis, the need for Auburn to meet our growth targets. And it is the alternative that is consistent with the environmental impact statement prepared for the comprehensive plan and the comprehensive plan EIS and the comprehensive plan that was adopted in December of 2024. Alternative three allows for more concentrated residential and commercial growth in the regional center and help us meet our growth allocations, which again, 19,000, about 19,500 new jobs, about 12,000 new housing units by 2044. Regional growth centers, like our downtown, are intended to absorb the bulk of future growth. And is projected with this alternative, about 17% of the new jobs and 49% of the new housing units will be provided in this downtown area. It also allows the city to meet the regional growth center requirements of Pughstown Regional Council, which helps us maintain eligibility for grants. This includes transportation grants and even arts grants. And alternative three implements the new districts, which I'll go over on the next couple of slides. I want to say before I get into the districts that we, there, there will be some minor revisions when the plan comes back to you in November. There's a couple of house bills, co-living housing, House Bill 1998, adopted in 2024. And then design review, House Bill 19, sorry, 1293, also adopted in 2024. Those house bills will, will amend the plan just a little bit to reflect those house bills, adding co-living housing. And then probably have some changes due to the design review, preliminary design review feedback.
There's some other changes related to the legislation for parking requirements that have changed and also floor area ratios. So those will also change.
There's been a lot of moving pieces from the House Legislature. And while this plan wasn't developed, we've got more moving tart, moving pieces. So, but with that said, so first is the DUC Core. These are the light magenta and dark magenta areas outlined. The downtown Core 125 District will allow for buildings that are 125 feet tall. They'll also be subject to the Auburn Municipal Airport overlay height restrictions. The Core 75 District would allow for buildings that are 75 feet height. This is the current height limit in the DUC, in the downtown right now. This district would be across Main Street and there'd be a new node along, centered along Auburn Way North, again, to capture of the I-line or Rapid Ride. The Core 75 would also, also supports a arts and culture hub around the new theater, which in the future could become its own creative district. And I want to say along Main Street, the design standards would continue to reinforce a pedestrian experience. I mentioned the new design standards were, they're currently being updated with the help of consultants. And we shared for review probably January 2026. Second is the DUC Health and Wellness District. It's the purple area. It's, it's for the, around the hospital area, intended to be used for medical and medical-related uses or those uses compatible with the medical community. It's also intended to facilitate development of medical uses and capitalize on the already thriving medical community downtown. Also, the maximum height is 125 feet. The next is the Neighborhood Residential District. These are the orange areas. In residential areas surrounding downtown, the Neighborhood Residential District would be optimized for small lot development at lower and some higher levels of density. It would, this district would support middle housing types like duplexes and sixplexes, small apartment buildings and also not stated here, but also small co-living units. This would also align with the city's Housing Action Plan and meet the new state requirements of House Bill 1110 and House Bill for co-living housing, 1998. And then the Flex Residential District. This is a new district would allow for middle housing as well as some light or craft industrial, commercial uses that are compatible with residential areas like a workshop space or a small brewery or small offices. The term flex is a little bit of commercial, a little bit of light industrial, a little bit of residential. And then lastly, while not highlighted, we have the light blue areas. Those are existing light industrial. And then we have the pink areas at the top of the map. Those are existing commercial. Those are not really intended to change, only that they would be subject to some light design standards.
All right. And so to wrap it up, this slide just kind of represents where we are in the process and we're just kind of in the middle. The environmental impact statement process is complete. And for those that didn't have time to read all 400 pages of the packet, we've got plenty of time. We expect to be back before City Council, as Alexandria said, sometime towards the end of the year, probably November, December timeframe. In the meantime, on the agenda, we will be taking this to Planning Commission in early October, having a public hearing in early November. And we've, we've also kind of reached out to some of our stakeholder partner organizations. We presented the new plan to the DAC, Downtown Auburn Cooperative, last week. And we're also on the schedule to share the plan with the, the BIA at their regular monthly meeting, which unfortunately was canceled last month, but we're going to engage with them next month. So that is where we are and thank you for your time.
Thank you. Council, do you have any questions? Councilwoman Sturgis.
Thank you. Do you also, I know the BIA works closely in the Downtown Business Association with the chamber as well, but is there a communication plan to make sure the chamber is just aware of what's happening as well?
Yes.
Councilmember Tracy Taylor.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Rikes. Director Crum and Alexandria, thank you again for your presentation. My question sits with our partners and now that you've brought this forward to our partners, how do we look, or what does it look like with their engagement? Are we expecting something from them? Are we expecting feedback? If we do expect feedback, what is that going to look like and how is that going to be implemented?
We've invited, we've invited feedback and, you know, kind of shared the plan and the current status. And so I think at this point, you know, we're, we're, we're open to feedback. We've, we've invited it. We've, we've invited it. I don't know, I don't know, you know, what we expect to receive, but certainly if we do get that feedback, we'll, we'll share it and, you know, react accordingly.
Any other questions, Council? Last chance. Thank you. Thank you very much for your presentation.
Thank you.
Well, we've come to the end of our agenda. It was a short night, so-